Stand in one minute.
I'll call the meeting order of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for March 14, 2022. Glad to see each and every one of you here. As you noticed, that I am not your usual chairman. I am the vice chairman, and we'll move on as quick as we can with the business for this evening. Everyone, please stand, and we'll have our prayer and pledge of allegiance. Shall we pray? Most gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful for the day you've given us, and it is a beautiful one that we have, with the sunshine we have, and we know that spring will be here, and the changing of seasons, and we see with this that we are truly a blessed county. Father, we ask that you be with us tonight in our decisions, that you give us the wisdom, the ability to make the decisions that are important for the citizens of this county, and make sure that they are the right ones in what we need to do. Thank you for our blessings, but may we always remember the blessings that we do have come from you. Watch over us, protect us, and guide us. We offer this prayer in the Son's holy name. Amen. Our pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You have a quorum for tonight's meeting. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Charlotte P., Chip Pinion, Craig Lynch, David Jones, Jim Everwater, Lee Bogle, Marvin Whitworth, Mike Kush, Rhonda Allen, Jeff Phillips.
Here.
We have a quorum.
At this time, we'll ask for approval of our minutes. Motion to approve, Mr. Chip Pinion, second, by Marvin Whitworth. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? They are approved. Items that withdrawn or deferred, I don't believe we've had any. I don't see any here on the docket, so we'll move right into our new business, starting with 6A. This is submitted for site plan approval, City Express Gas Station, Davenport Station, Lot Number 145, 223003. It's construction of 5,000 square feet of general retail trade space. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you, and good evening, commission members and those in the audience. Hope everybody's doing well today. As you stated, this property is located in the Davenport Station subdivision. This is located along Shelbyville Pike, 231 South. The applicant, as you stated, is proposing to build a 5,000-square-foot gas station and convenience market. There will be right-in and right-out access provided along Shelbyville Pike, as well as a secondary access along Burnley Way. This plan was originally going to be on the Planning Commission's February 28 agenda, but was removed due to drainage concerns. We've had numerous meetings, actually, with staff and the applicant's design engineer on March -- well, one was on March 3, but there have been subsequently other meetings as well, and our concerns mainly deal with the drainage, how they're proposing to hold the drainage on the property, and how that might impact the lots, especially to the west. That'd be lots 140 -- well, 86, 146, 7, and 8. From a zoning and planning standpoint, most of our comments have been addressed. I'm going to turn it over to Mike to let him handle the drainage aspects, because I know he's got several comments and a small presentation to make.
Okay. Thank you, Douglas. Yes, and this is quite a challenging site. Looking at it on the surface, one wouldn't think so. It's this parcel right here on Shelbyville Pike, right at the new road called Burnley Way, right across the street from Rucker Road. This is where the new traffic signal has been installed and functioning for a while. So just looking at it, on the surface, it does not seem to be an issue, nice corner lot and all that, but you can see right behind it is the Davenport subdivision, and these houses are built very closely together, and that was one thing that gave us pause for concern. There's also more houses on here that this aerial image from early '21 does not show. So what we were concerned with, that every stormwater management area has to have an emergency spillway, so -- and that was our concern. When this pond starts to overflow, it's got to go through these tightly-packed houses. So we've worked back and forth with the design team, and they are proposing, and I will go to the construction plans. What they've had to do, build a long off-site drainage system that essentially routes the stormwater from the low area of where they're proposing to do their stormwater management, and then they're piping it around -- this is a common area that I'll show you right here. This is a common area that they'll have to pipe this around to get to this drainage network over here. So -- and that, we've been back and forth with that. What I -- I'm feeling much better about it, but what they're proposing to do is they're -- because of the tightness of the site, they're having to build a concrete retaining wall right here to hold back the stormwater volume that they need. And then with that, it will be metered through an outlet structure, go through this long network, and then come out around this way to an open ditch over here. So all in all, that doesn't seem so terrible, but our concern is if something happens to this outlet structure, the water continues to build up, it builds up and spills over on the retaining wall through these tightly-packed houses over here. So they have upsized the outlet pipe through here, but in one of our discussions, and I was a design engineer for 20-something years before I got here, so what we would do, we would put the detention pond underground, under the parking lot there. They don't really want to do that. They would rather do something outside and not have to do the underground chambers. But I asked the design engineer and said, "Look at the cost, because you're going to have to have this -- it's like six and a half feet tall, counting the base, the underground base, and the wall itself at this end, and it's more like five and a half feet down here. So you're going to have to form that up, hand-form that up, build that wall, and install all your other features along with it, the outlet structure, the stormwater network that leaves the site." So I asked them to look at the cost comparison, because if it's about the same, I think if we did an underground detention, and so say if this did not -- it became overwhelmed with a heavy storm, the pipe got full or something like that, the inlets could build up and spill out and go into the street as the overflow route. That's, you know, that's my druther. I'd rather see it underground and encapsulated under the parking lot, but if, you know, this -- I'm feeling much better about this. I just -- the wall is going to be very expensive to build, and there's a lot of coordination that needs to go along with its construction, so that's the only thing that I'm looking at. So I'm feeling much better about the wall. Like I said, I'd rather see a cost comparison of the two and put it underground, but that's -- that was our big, big issue with the stormwater, and you can kind of see what I was talking about. These lines are the backs of houses, so they're tightly packed in there, and that's what our concern is. If this pond builds up and spills over, there's not an outlet except between the houses and through the yard. So that's -- they've upsized the outlets' network going downstream to help handle the flow and maybe lessen the chance of a clog or being overwhelmed. So they've upsized the pipe from what they feel like they need in their calculations. So I'm feeling much better about it, but I would like to ask that you, if you do approve this, that you do it with staff comments and that they continue to work with staff.
Is, Mike, is the wall a what-if the pipes fill up? That wall is for protection?
No, the wall is needed for the volume, to hold the volume of the water in the pond. So it's going to be full several, you know, every time it fills up, that wall's going to be filled up, and then --
Yeah, yeah.
-- once it gets to a certain elevation, it starts to spill out and go through the outlet structure and then the pipe.
And then if you've got a structure that's obstructed the drainpipe?
Right, and you remember Eric Hill, the previous county engineer, his dead cow theory? So if a dead cow fell and blocked the drainage, what happens to the water? And that's kind of -- I'm a Murphy's Law kind of guy. Well, you know, if the worst case happens, you've got to be ready for it. So that's my stance on this. I'm feeling much more comfortable with this since he's upsized the pipes and built a taller wall, and -- but that's -- you see our quandary with this, and if you allow us to continue to work together before we get to the pre-construction meeting, before any permits are issued, you know, this wall will be holding back water, so it'll have to be designed by a structural engineer, which is going to add more cost to it. So that's what we're looking at.
I have a couple of questions. The stormwater structures themselves or that system, who will be responsible for maintaining that?
There will be a long-term maintenance agreement that the property owner will have to fill out and sign and get recorded with the county. So it'll be a perpetual maintenance. They'll have to have a maintenance schedule, you know, when, how often it's going to be inspected, how often it's going to be mowed, how if it needs to be replaced, all these ifs ands or whats, what happens, that it will be maintained.
The wall, will it be landscaped aesthetically pleasing, or what's the -- what are those neighbors that close going to be looking at out of their backyard?
They are also proposing to build a six-foot privacy fence along the back, so that will help hide the wall. The fence should be higher than the concrete wall, so they shouldn't see anything except the back of a fence, and they are supposed to be -- I haven't seen the plans yet, but they're going to be landscaping above the waterline in the pond. The top of the wall is 672, so anything above 672 elevation would have vegetation, so they would see the vegetation and, you know, the rest of the site, so until it grows up.
And the lighting plan for that with those houses being that close will be contained as well?
Have they submitted a lighting plan, Douglas?
I believe we saw a lighting plan, not on this most recent submittal, but they did have one in a previous submittal. I mean, it'll have to meet our standard. As I recall, looking at it, it was fine, but yeah, they will be required to have the lighting.
Thank you.
But all in all, they've done, I believe, everything. There's some fine tuning that needs to happen. They've added a sidewalk with a handicap ramp along Burnley Way. The subdivision only was required, well, proposed to have a sidewalk on one side. So we wanted the nearby residents the ability to be able to use the sidewalk system and build a new one up the site and then to the convenience, the gas station here. So they're going to do that, so we're happy they're doing that, and then they're making the improvements in Shelbyville Pike as well.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming this whole lot will be concrete pavement or something?
It will be.
None of the water that falls on it will soak in?
No, sir.
Ninety percent of it, 95% of it?
95% of it will have to be collected into the stormwater management system.
Couple of questions. Is there no other way we can take the water other than to the back and around?
Right.
Because that is going to stop up sometime in the next 20, 30 years. It's going to happen.
That's our concern, you know, the dead cow or Murphy's Law.
Or the garbage, or the styrofoam cups, or
Right.
panty wrappers, or whatever is going to get in there and stop that up.
Yes, sir, and that's part of the reason we had them upsize the outlet, the downstream drainage system through here, so.
But if it's blocked and can't get in that oversized drainage system, it's still going to flood the neighbors there.
Yes, sir. So that's kind of what I was looking at with underground detention. If it builds up, spills out, it's got the ability to go -- it has the ability to spill out and go out the driveways into the street and into the drains network of the road network. So that's kind of what I was looking at, but, you know, like I said, I'm feeling much better having this upsized pipe network downstream, the, you know, the taller wall to help hold back more storms. It's still got a lot of moving parts that we need to fine-tune, but if you allow us to continue to work with the design team, I think we can get this in great shape.
Other discussion?
Mr. Kush? As far as the ingress and ingress goes of traffic, it looks good. They've got two points of entry and two points of exit, right?
Yes, well, three points of entrance, two points of exit, yeah. Well, three points of exit, yes, right out.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. So that all looks good. Lighting, you said they haven't turned in a lighting plan yet, but?
No, they did. It wasn't with this set that they submitted today, but it's -- they had it in a previous submittal, and I didn't have many comments on it after looking at it.
Okay, so other -- and those lots at Davenport, those three in question, they're not critical, right? They're not in a low floodplain or anything like that?
They're just sardines packed in there.
Yeah, just tight space in between?
Yes.
Okay. I'm happy to make a motion to approve subject to staff comments. I, like you, Mike, would rather see that go underground for a couple of reasons. You didn't mention anything about a vector nuisance. If this was an open pond down in that back corner where the outlet would be, there's always going to be, or a majority of the time, there's going to be water, which creates mosquitoes, snakes, things like that. And if I'm the three neighbors immediately close to that, that it wouldn't be my favorite thing to be that close to a mosquito pit.
Right.
Trash, Marvin mentioned, that is going to constantly collect trash, and there are lots of nice trash barriers and racks you can put on that wall to protect that outlet for the cow, but it still is going to need maintenance, right? And if you go underground, you have more usable space for parking or other things.
Or just landscaping and then?
Yeah, so underground makes more sense, but that would be part of you and the engineer records discussion, so I would make a motion to approve subject to staff comments.
May I apologize for being late? It's my problem and no one else's. I apologize. I think we've been discussing item 22-3003, and that's a site plan approval for City Express Gas Station. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion or comments? Rhonda Allen?
So, Mike, you said your comfort level would be greater with the underground tanks.
Yes.
Is there going to -- since we're doing it subject to staff comments, is there anything that's going to happen during the construction phase that might cause you to require that? Is that what the staff comments are going to be?
Well, some of the things that we need to work out is the initial erosion control plan. So any site that you have, where you opened up to excavation, you've got to have a sediment trap or a sediment basin or equivalent measures. So before they can start moving dirt, filling, cutting, grading, and all that other stuff, they have to put in this sediment basin, is what they're showing on this plan, but the plan includes that wall. So they've got to build the wall first before they can start moving dirt, and the wall's got a hole in it that the stormwater network goes through, and then the outlet structure goes through, so that's going to take some coordinating and fine-tuning itself. So like I said, there's a lot of moving parts to this, but before they can start wholesale grading and drainage work, earthmoving, they've got to build that wall. And how do you install a fence after you've installed a five-foot-tall wall and there's only, you know, a few feet between you and the property line? So there's a lot of moving parts to this. I'm sorry, but it's a -- I think it can be done. I personally would rather see it go underground and self-contained and not -- and you would only see a landscaped slope behind the gas station with trees and, you know, ultimately a fence. So everything would be contained in the parking lot right there under the site, but it is more expensive. Underground detention is more expensive, and it costs a pretty penny, but with this new retaining wall to hold back the stormwater, it's going to cost a pretty penny to be designed and constructed and, you know, over time, maintained. You know, underground detention will have to be maintained too, but they are designed with, you know, knowing how much cover you need over the top of it and the load bearings and all that. It's already been designed. You just size the system for the amount of drainage you have. So that's my preference, and that's one of the things I've asked him, the design engineer, to do, is give me a cost comparison. How much is the wall going to cost compared to an underground detention system? Make a fair judgment on that.
Well, we have no greater responsibility in any of these plans than drainage.
Yes.
And when I look and see how close those houses are, I mean, how many feet are they from that property line?
It's probably about 20 feet.
I'm going to make a motion?
There's a setback, and these houses are large. I mean, for the size lots, I mean, they're filling up pretty much every usable square inch. These are some that are adjacent. The -- this is aerial image from early of last year, so it doesn't reflect the other houses that have been constructed since this photograph was taken. So you can see it's packed on there pretty tightly.
Okay. I'm not comfortable with putting those homeowners at risk of a drain being blocked. I can just only imagine all the downsides that there could be to those three houses, potentially more flooding. If we can do a better job designing it now on the front end, we need to do a better job designing it on the front end. So I'll make a motion to amend the motion as presented and request that the tanks, the drainage tanks, be placed underground.
I have an amendment to the original motion. And a second. Other discussion on the amendment to the original motion? All those in favor of the amendment to the motion, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to amend carries. Now we're back to the original motion as amended. Want to have any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the amended motion, please say aye. Is there any opposition to that? The motion carries as amended. Let me give you guys a very brief explanation. As you probably know, we're -- my wife and I are caretakers to my mother-in-law, and I had a little issue with her, and I had to wait till another family member got there to be with her. So it's my problem, my issue, and I apologize for being late. If you will, please forgive me. Items? I have absolutely, positively no doubt. Item 6B, we have two items that are presented for rezoning request, and let me go ahead and make the announcement that all of these rezonings will be heard before the full Rutherford County Commission on April the 14th. That's a Thursday evening, and they'll be scheduled at 6:30 PM. 6BA, item number REZ22-006, Amy Dearman, location is 280 and 318 Sharp Springs Road. Commission district is 12. The county commissioner is Robert Stevens. Size of the site is approximately 29 acres. Approximately one acre of that will be rezoned. Tax map is 19. The existing zoning is RM for residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CS for commercial services. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Sharp Springs Road. The applicant currently operates their sign and lighting business at 184 Sharp Springs Road, which is immediately adjacent to the subject property. You can see it. Mike's highlighting it on the map. You recall that there was a rezoning application brought before you and the Board of Commissioners back in 2020, which was the result of a zoning enforcement action against that property, which was 184. The business was being operated in a residential zone at that time, and the subject property also had a large amount of open storage. The Board of Commissioners approved the zoning request to commercial services back in May of 2020, and the open storage has since been cleaned up on the property. That aerial that you're looking at right there is an older one. Newer aerials that Mike will pop up there, you can see that pretty much all of that has been removed from the property. So from that standpoint, the applicant has brought the property into compliance with the zoning ordinance. She would like to zone approximately one acre of this property, the subject property, to construct a building to house her trucks and sign materials. There would not be any open storage, and she, we feel, after discussing it, staff does, that they're originally were looking at commercial general, but after discussing it with her and also her representative, we felt commercial services was in order, which is what the property at 184 is zoned as well. So this would just be really an expansion of that business. Access would be along Sharp Springs Road. Their concept plan does show an additional access point for the new structure. Right now, it's not clear if there will be cross-access between the two. I imagine they'll probably build something in. It would just make sense to do that. The required parking spots, parking lot design, et cetera, that'll all be determined by the zoning ordinance if this is approved, and then we'll see an engineered site plan on that. Same goes for landscaping and buffering, and also the performance standards. So ultimately, what she's requesting is just a zoning change to expand her business just for that one acre. We will need a legal description of that one acre prior to the Board of Commissioners meeting. That's not something we have to have tonight. The applicant has done a lot of work on the property and to bring it back into compliance with our regulations. They're also aware that any improvements to the property will require site plan approval through either a staff or Planning Commission approval, depending on the size of the structure they want to build. Overall, we are comfortable with this request, and we do recommend approval. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Any questions for staff? The applicant available? Good evening, Clyde.
Chairman Phillips, Planning Commissioners, my name is Clyde Roundhill-Helson, Steel Engineering. I'm representing Mrs. Dearman with Boom Sign and Lighting. If there's anything I can answer for you, I gladly do that at this time. Thank you, Jeff.
This time, I'll declare a public hearing open for item REZ22-003. This time I'll declare a public hearing open for item REZ22-006, Amy Dearman. I see the county commissioner, Robert Stevens, in attendance. Commissioner Stevens, you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robert Stevens, I represent this district on the county commission. I would like to ask you to support the request. The applicants have cleaned up the property over the past few years. They are operating a business there currently. It's a good business, and they are just simply looking to expand it and need this extra space to do that. They've been good community members. I've spoken to them about their desire to expand the business and continue to comply with our zoning regulations. And also, I'd like to note that I have not heard any opposition from any neighbors over there. Everybody seems to be okay with it that's there. And also, the town of Smyrna is okay with this too. So I would ask you to support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. Once again, this is a public hearing. The public hearing is open. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Anyone? I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve this rezoning.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is that including all of staff comments?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Doug said we didn't have to, but we're going to anyway. Chip, that was, motion was with staff comments, and Rhonda, it was with your second, okay? Once again, we have a motion and a second to approve REZ22-006, Amy Dearman. Any other questions or comments before we vote? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Are there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Stevens, for being here. Item 6B, REZ22-007, Melinda Brown Black, location is Last Cassis Pike. Commission district is 2. The county commissioner is Steve Piercy. The size of the site is approximately 2.4 acres. Tax map is 61A, group A. The existing zoning is RM residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CS for commercial services. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant is proposing to zone all three of these parcels to commercial services or CS. Information provided by the applicant's representative state that there aren't currently any development plans. But in the future, they would like to be able to build like a strip center or just general retail uses on the property. Parcel 4.0, which is the one on the corner, as you can see on the map, I don't know if you can actually make out the numbers. Now, that's the corner of Delay, sorry, Delay Drive. Oh, yeah, there you go. That one right there has access both to Last Cassis Pike and Delay Drive. The other parcels would have access directly onto Last Cassis Pike. It's probably the anticipation, at least from staff standpoint, and I would imagine the applicants, that this would all kind of develop at one time. So if this were to be approved, obviously, we'd see a site plan brought in to us for us to look at, similar really to the one we just looked at just a few minutes back, having some access possibly on Delay Drive, but also onto Last Cassis Pike. Last Cassis Pike is a state road, so TDOT approval for any new access roads onto the property will be required. Delay, of course, is a county road. Again, not saying we would definitely see something there, we would just have to see kind of what they bring in and kind of go from there. Properties located in commercial services are required to have a type 2 buffer adjacent to residentially zoned property. As you can see, that would be along the south side, really on those three tracks right there. The property to the east is commercial services, so there wouldn't be any buffering required there. And we don't require buffering on either Last Cassis Pike or Delay Drive just because they're public rights of way. And of course, our performance standards would also apply in this situation since they are commercial zones. The properties are immediately adjacent, as you can see, to commercial services zoning. You can also see commercial neighborhood located directly across the street at the intersection of Canesville Pike and Last Cassis Pike. And then just a little further down the road to the west, you can see some institutional zoning. Yeah, Mike's going to, there you go, right in that area. So there is a large amount of non-residential zoning in this area already. There's also some commercial services across Canesville Pike and Last Cassis Pike to the northeast. Although this is, one other thing I wanted to point out before I already stated our recommendation, this is also within the designated rural center that was identified for this area based on our current comprehensive plan. So although this application is speculative in nature, we are comfortable with this request, and we do recommend approval. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is present, as well as her representative, who is Mr. Clyde Roundtree, as it was for the last application. And I will say, the only call I received on this application was in support of it.
Thank you, Doug.
Just for reference, this is where we're going to have another public health and safety building at the Last Cassis Volunteer Fire Department. They're going to build it right here on this spot.
Good. Any questions for staff at this time? Mr. Roundtree? Any additional comments?
My name is Clyde Roundtree, Hudson Steel Engineering, representing Mrs. Brown. And I would like to say that Last Cassis is booming. So we're, here it comes, you know, that's the country and it's becoming the city. But Mrs. Brown's been there, her family's been long-term landholders. And she has no immediate plans, but she does see it developing at the same time, whenever that time comes. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Did I see in the reading on the information you sent out, Doug and Mike and Mr. Roundtree, that this does lie in a 100-year floodplain, some of it? And if it develops, that, of course, will have to be taken care of, as?
Yes, sir. Yeah, they'd have to meet all the county and FEMA requirements for that. That's absolutely correct.
So if we did see a site plan for this or the adjacent property, the floor would have to be at least one foot above the base flood or the 100-year flood elevation. Any fill that is placed in the floodplain would have to have a compensating cut somewhere else so we don't lose that volume. Thank you.
Thank you. This time I'll declare a public hearing open for REZ22-007, Melinda Brown Black. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Also, Steve County Commissioner Steve Piercy here. Or Piercy?
Chairman, how are you doing?
Good.
Planning commissioners, I won't take long with this. You cannot make everyone happy in a situation like this. There's always a little discomfort. People move out in the country, they won't leave it country. But in this situation, I couldn't think of a better time to let this property change since it belongs to a lifelong resident. Their family has owned this property way before my time. She goes to the church right up the street, so they're not going to let her deface the community at all with anything. And I feel like she'd be easy to work with, with the changes, with the floodplain. I haven't had any calls about this in opposition, not at all. And I would have to recommend its approval or ask that y'all approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Piercy. Anyone else here wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I will move to approve this subject to staff comments.
Al, second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve REZ22-007, Melinda Brown Black. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Doug, anything else?
No, sir, nothing. Just giving a, just a quick update, though, just on the comprehensive plan update. We had our kickoff meeting just a couple of weeks back. It was several of you, I know, were there. It was very well attended. It was very, very encouraged by the turnout. We're currently working on our community meetings right now, where we're going to have one basically in each quadrant of the county, northwest, northeast, southwest, southeast. Got one tentatively scheduled right now for the Rockvale area at the high school, but we'll be getting the other three taken care of, and we'll get you all those dates and everything. They'll all be in April is what we're looking at right now. So things are moving forward, and real excited about it. So with that, that's pretty much all I have. Mike?
Make sure you eat a good breakfast. In two weeks for the daytime planning commission, we've got a long schedule. Yeah, maybe, maybe.
You guys will notice Doug Demossi's setting is really excited about it. That is his excited face. Take note. Our next planning commission meeting will be at nine o'clock on Monday, March the 28th, here in this courtroom. Anyone have anything else? Once again, I appreciate your time, your patience, and your attendance. Thank you. We are adjourned.